I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Mr. Piscinari, will you please take role, please?
Mrs. Weiss?
Here.
Mr. Grisbeck?
Here.
Mrs. Hoppy?
Here.
Mrs. Janicek?
Here.
Mr. McGregor?
Here.
Mr. Modrak?
Here.
Mr. Scalzo?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Christensen?
Here.
And I'm present.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda, we have an update from Draw Collective on the K through five center.
Good evening. Is that on? Yeah. How's everyone tonight?
Good. How are you doing?
Excellent. Thank you. I'll try to be generally quick, but we have a brief update that's focused on the schedule of the project and a little bit on design. Is there a clicker?
There is indeed.
Thank you. I'll do a little bit of a summary as we go along just on the design and where we're at today. Just as a refresher for anybody who hasn't been following, this is the existing property. The Neil Armstrong, it shows the existing Neil Armstrong school as well as our proposed elementary school addition to the site. This is a rendering of the finished product as it states, stands today from a design point of view, showing our main entrance off of King School Road on the left-hand side of the page, still having Murray Avenue and Boyer Avenue connecting. And this slide actually shows the routing of buses on the site and the pickup area and drop-off area on the southern portion of the project building. And then it also shows the pickup and drop-off areas to the front entrance of the school around the main parking lot. As a part of our process with the civil engineers and working with the municipality, there are geotechnical engineers and traffic engineers involved in studying all of the design outcomes. And those things are some of the things I'll touch on today when it comes to schedule. But we are in the design development phase of the project, but the site development portion of the project runs ahead of the building itself. So we've done teacher meetings. We're currently right now modifying the plans to incorporate all of the teacher comments. And then we'll have some additional meetings to finalize those spaces with the teacher groups. That's been a really good process. And so the building is getting, I'll say, flushed out internally. But the site portion of the project is much more advanced than that. There, we're a little bit behind on the geotechnical engineers providing their report. We haven't gotten a final report from them. Traffic engineering is finalizing their report. And those things make a difference into the final site design. So this is, I would consider it preliminary at this point. A few slides, we've shown these before, but again, for folks who might not have seen them, as we enter from King School Drive, you can see the school in the distance. It's quite a wooded site on this portion of the campus. As we approach the school, the front of the building, this is one of our earlier renderings. As we get through the design development process, the building ebbs and flows with its materiality. There'll be an updated version of this, but this is essentially parent drop-off and pickup main entrance. This is a little closer up view as you're walking in. This is a helicopter view essentially. On the left-hand side of the screen is the entrance driveway coming from King School Road. And this gives you an idea of how the building basically is, sits into the site. On the left-hand portion of the slide, the grade is higher than it is on the right-hand portion. And the building is actually essentially built into the hillside. So you can see how much lower the building is to the homes in the neighborhood to the north of the site. We're relatively the same elevation to the homes on the southern portion of the site, but there is a big vegetated wetlands and some grading differences. There's a grading swale in between that neighborhood. And then in the distance, you can see just a simple box showing what NAMS looks like in relationship. I mentioned a little bit about things like traffic and so forth. This is a little bit of a detailed explanation of what's going on when it comes to our timeline and the approval process, which to some degrees is a little bit out of the school district's control. It's a complicated project and there's a lot of, a lot of entities involved. Our county approval has been submitted. It was submitted in the fall. This is a land development approval when it comes to stormwater and erosion sedimentation control for the site. Things like paying attention to wetlands and being careful about grading and how the site is managed. That is in the process. We received preliminary comments about a month ago. Those were quickly responded to and now it is in review process at the county. So this is, it's the Department of Environmental Protection ultimately is oversight in this area. That approval process is a five to eighth month process. We're right now targeting somewhere in the neighborhood of June to July at worst case, we think, for that approval. Traffic, we have an upcoming meeting with the municipals, traffic engineer and the municipality to review the traffic report, its findings, recommendations, and ultimately together a requirements will be developed. And then outside of that, we know that there's going to be some traffic improvements at the main entrance along King School Road, possibly a turning lane to come into the site and at least one other intersection nearby. Those things will be part of that discussion and then there'll be a cost estimate coming out of that that the traffic engineers will provide the school board. In our budget right now, we have line items that are just guessing what those numbers are. Sewer authority is our probably biggest challenge because it's a long process for them. So we've submitted essentially the, and worked with the municipal authority to determine the sewage flow off of the site. They have been going through an analysis process of actually looking in the downstream neighborhood and actually doing calculations of the flow in our region. And they will compare that to what is coming off of our site to determine the size of piping and things like that downstream and if there's effect of our project downstream. We do know there is obviously effect and effect. The question is, can the lines downstream handle it? There are some issues preliminarily that we know about. And so the question is, are we going to end up with a gravity feed solution that just connects your municipal sewer with no downstream improvements or will there be downstream improvements? We're assuming some downstream improvements right now. The alternative is to do a pumping scenario and pump up to King School Road. That is also a possibility. It's more expensive. We'd like to avoid that. So once the counts get done, the municipal authority will make a recommendation that'll go to Department of Environmental Protection. We'll go through that process. That is our big, I'll say the BHAG that we have from a scheduling point of view. Even if it is a downstream approval, we won't receive that approval likely until September. And then probably a couple more months longer if it turned out that we needed to do it in a pumping fashion. So we're working closely with those folks and to make that all happen, but it does alter our time schedule a little bit.
So is that the critical path then? Like no site development or initial construction can start until that is completed or can you start?
That's our recommendation. Yeah. I would like to see you not go move forward with any kind of earth moving until you have the key approvals that are necessary. We can operate under a conditional approval for some earth moving and things like that, but I feel very comfortable if we had those key things. So we may get a preliminary information from Department of Environmental Protection that says this is what you need to do and if you do this, you'll, you know, have your permit under that scenario. If it's follow, if we can follow through with it, then I'd feel more comfortable to tell you that at that time. So we'll go one month at a time as we get that information. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Municipal land development approval. The municipality's been very helpful in working with us. It's a team thing to do a project this big. And to achieve municipal land development approval, it isn't just what's happening with the requirements of the municipality. It also includes all these other approvals. So they need to be able to have the MPDS approvals. They need to see the sewer approval. They need to have all of these things to be able to give you a final permit. And so they are, they can do conditional approvals too, but up to a certain point, their final approval comes after all of these other things are put together. And again, it isn't 100% linear, but there is quite a bit of that that is involved. So we are having our first planning commission meeting tomorrow. It's a preliminary run-through, basically introduce the project to the planning commission. We've already achieved variances for the project successfully with the municipality. So we'll do the preliminary. Out of that will be questions and possibly responses that are needed or revisions that are needed. And so it may take a few months to get through that process. And then after that, the recommendation to go to council. And I apologize if I'm telling you things that you already know, but I think it's good to be transparent and talk about where we could have some longer time periods. We're not in control of it. We try to give everybody the answers that they need and help, be helpful with the information. As a part of that, there's a lock consolidation because the district is purchasing property that's adjacent. And so we're doing the lock consolidation at the same time we're doing the planning, kind of kill two birds with one stone rather than do one first and wait for the other.
Dan, do you have a current timeline of when you anticipate the board will be able to see the traffic study as well as when the public may be able to see it? Or is that too soon to kind of guess now?
As soon as we have the meeting with the municipality's engineer, right after that, I think it should be published.
Okay.
Basically, they tell us whether we, the engineers, the traffic engineer has done the right things and whether they want anything changed. And then after that, we make the modifications and then I think you should be able to easily put it up for everyone.
Sounds good. Thanks.
A couple other things. Geotechnical report, they did complete the borings on the site. Many of you may have seen activity on the site. That's all it was, was a giant grid of borings across the site to be able to understand what the underground qualities of the earth is. We got a verbal report on some of the locations of the site in talking with the engineer so we could at least be moving on some of our foundation design. But we can't finish foundation design or go too far with it without the finished report, which is being processed right now. So we don't have that. That also is a requirement of municipal approval too. Cost estimating has begun. We have opinion of probable cost that is being worked on by Macearo Construction in the design development phase. I've got a schedule to show you where that is currently set for. That's based on our documents, based on a lot of the independent things that we're talking about here, geotechnical and things like that. So they'll incorporate that in their cost estimate. And what we've already also been doing, working with them and the administration is we started a value engineering process to look at what is being planned and determine if there are ways to alter the project to save, save some money in some areas or if there are other ways to protect ourselves from, I will say, the economic situation in construction today. We're not 100% sure how much things cost from month to month and that is a kind of a rolling, changing thing. And so we want to try to make sure that we are under control and that on bid day, when it does happen, there aren't surprises of any great extent and the project is affordable. So that is going to be an ongoing process for the next four months or so until we get to a level that we are feeling confident about. As a part of building a new building, a new school building in Pennsylvania, there's an Act 34 hearing process, which is a reporting to the public on the cost of the project essentially. And there is a process to go through that we will help lead the district through. Essentially, there's a lead-up process to an Act 34 hearing. And a hearing is much like this, but there'll be some recording of the hearing, looking for public comment and things of that nature. But then there's an advertising process. There will be a booklet that actually explains to the community the financing of the project and the dollars involved in the project so everyone can see that. And you're used to me talking in general terms on numbers for the project and we always talk total project cost. As Macearo starts to present their numbers now that they're actually responsible for the estimate, you'll see total project cost from them. So it's always what's your out-of-pocket for the whole thing, not just pieces or construction. So currently right now, I did a draft schedule. As long as the Act 34 is complete, frankly, before we go out for bid, I'd like it to be sooner just because I don't like to get things that close. But this puts us months ahead of the bid date or going out for bid. And so it also gives the district some flexibility as to whether they want, when they want to exactly schedule the Act 34 hearing, but this was my preliminary. I've started a draft of the booklet now. I apologize, it's a little bit small for my eyes, but all those things that I just talked about are on this schedule. There are two pages. The first page are, in general, the big picture of each approval process that we're going through. We have the land development approval. The first one was the zoning hearing and variance request, which we approved, got approved. Land development is really the Bethel Park municipality portion. And then there's the MPDS approval. You can see that the MPDS approval is a long drawn-out process. I have it going to the end of June with a fallback until July. And I matched up the Bethel Park process with that as well because that's a really important, most municipalities are very serious about that. And so they kind of are co-joined. And then the big one is down at the bottom, the sewer planning process. You can see it's a long drawn-out thing to be able to get the flow monitoring accomplished, get the authority to actually make a recommendation to Department of Environmental Protection, then their review. And then right now, they're telling us that they think September. So right now, that's where we have the going out for bid date. That red line there is September 1st. I don't think that it'll be a problem going out for bid by then. There's a possibility that it could be slightly before, but I'd like to, usually summer construction is finishing up for most schools and most contractors that are doing schools by the end of August. It's a good time to start a bid process. Starting in the middle of the summer is a problem typically. And then this is our design process. It's, you know, co-joined with the approval process. And to be totally honest, this is a really big complicated project. Getting a few extra months to fine-tune, go through the value engineering process and fine-tune the design only makes for better documents and we're happy to have the time. And so right now, we are in, it says design development there. There's a bunch of lines there. We should be done with that in March. In design development, just for everyone's knowledge, essentially, all the rooms are laid out, all the cabinetry is laid out, all the ceilings, all the preliminary lighting are in place. All of the major components of the project are in the documents, including what does the building look like on the outside and all those things. So what you've seen up to this point have been a lot of schematic design, layouts and things like that. In the design development process, it all gets in there. We can see it in three dimensions. You can stand in a room and look at it really quickly to see the cabinetry and see the furniture. And so as we complete those, we'll be going back to the teachers for a final review of everything that we've done based on their comments and make some final revisions and close out design development and move into construction documentation. At that point, most of our design decisions should be made, other than if there are value engineering items that come up. Let's see. The big thing to note on this schedule is at the bottom, our construction term. Macearo Construction has looked at the project now that they're on board. They've analyzed the amount of time it would take to actually construct the project. And their request was for at least 32 months of construction. If you consider the size of the project, typically we can only do so many millions of dollars a month in manpower and delivery. Contractors can really only build so much on any one project at a time. And that also helps determine how long the construction process would take. To not get you into a situation where you are counting on getting in on this date and pushing, squishing everything and then as if there's some kind of guarantee and forcing the contractors to have to defend themselves during construction in case it rains too much and we can't get, we can't get foundations started on time, things like that, give them a little bit of extra time to make things healthy. So at this point, what the recommendation is, is to complete the project in July of 2026. So that's a 34-month process of construction. I think that's the big thing today to explain to everyone is I think when we started last summer, the hope was, hey, let's try to get it done in two years of construction. But now that everything's coming together with approvals and then having construction managers on board and looking really closely at what we're building and how long it would take, the two things are coming together to create a different end date than what you were envisioning originally. Would there be any questions about that? I mentioned some of these things. In the new building, we've been doing some value engineering items with the administration. Those items are already getting incorporated into the, into the design. We've been working on identifying alternate bids that might potentially help protect you on bid day if the numbers turned out to be higher than what are expected. What are your options? Are there pieces of the project that could be taken out for later construction or just taken out in scope period? Things that you might want, but don't, you think you could maybe survive without possibly. And so I know there aren't that many of those kinds of things, but I'll give a simple example. If we could survive with six feet less cabinetry in every single room, there is a lot of classrooms that would add up to a significant amount of money. And so because the building's so big, something simple like that could actually give you some flexibility on bid day. Now, I know from talking to the teachers, they cannot survive without that six feet of cabinetry. And so, but that's a choice. Either be able to afford the project or, you know, maybe, you know, take, take it on the tough a little bit. And that's part of our whole process together, working to solve those problems. And then one of the things that we've been doing, I've been working on a draw schedule for Doug and for his financing. And also we put together a preliminary soft cost for the project. Just so everybody knows, soft costs, you hear me talking about that and you'll hear Macearo talking about that. Those are the things that are not contracted by the contractors. So that would be furnishings, movable furnishings, our fees, the geotechnical fees, surveying, property purchase, all those things that you guys have been going through. You're not going to see those numbers on bid day because the contractors, those are already done by then. And so we budget for all of that stuff. Currently right now, we're less than, slightly less than 20% with the property purchase. I think we just did a reevaluation this week and we're 19.4, I think, percent. So we thought, we had 22% originally and so we're coming under budget so far on soft costs. Soft costs also include your contingency for construction and things like that too. Value engineering items, in case anybody was interested, these are some of the things that have been, are being looked at. We had a chill water system in the building. We're looking at modifying that and eliminating that and switching to VAV, a variable air volume system versus the fan powered boxes. It's a little technical, but there's some, some cost savings there. And the end result of usability in the space and controllability, I don't believe will be any different. There is a little bit of a maintenance difference. Looking at using aluminum conductors in the building instead of copper, dependent upon the marketplace. Right now, copper has been very expensive, but frankly, aluminum's been expensive too. So that'll be a, I'll say, a bid time decision based on how we write the specifications. Simplify exterior design and finishes. This is just getting better and better at what your building is going to become. And if we can minimize the differences in materials here and there, use the same windows and so on across the building, we're doing all those things. That's inherent to our process, but I think it's important because these are things that we talk about with the administration. We did eliminate the learning stairs in the building. Everybody's seen the pictures with the learning stairs and everything like that. That was an educational program decision. It actually just was a happy accident that is going to save us some money. But the reality is the district has looked at it and they figured out that how we team and how we work together at this grade level grouping is a lot different than it might be at, say, a middle school. And we don't want the kids sitting on steps just staring at a teacher. We want the kids in groups and having flexibility on a flat floor kind of a scenario. So those have been taken out, taken out, and we're modifying those areas. So a simplification of the design, but a program correction, in my opinion. We are going through the process of looking at an option for reducing the number of bathrooms that we have on the kindergarten and first grade. Currently right now, we have a full bathroom in each room. Super expensive. We have sketch plans we're working on to try to find a way where a bathroom can be shared by two rooms. Eliminate sinks in the classrooms, grades two through five. That's an item that currently right now, we have followed through on the design, but we have, we're still looking at science rooms to make sure they have sinks and sinks in the corridors, which at one point we had them. The corridors have activity centers where we come out. They're usable for projects and things like that. We had sinks and then we took them out because we had the sinks in the classroom. Everyone was saying, ah, if we have a sink in the classroom, I don't think I'll use it in the corridor. But now we're back to, let's put the sinks in the corridors and not put them in every single classroom. The district can realize quite a bit of savings there and everybody still has the ability to use sinks and have them very adjacent to their rooms. So a compromise. We do have some challenges that we've been going through on the grading of the site. Some of this has to do with the type of soil. So our preliminary conversation with the geotechnical engineers after they did their first boring analysis is that the site has a lot of clay. Under that scenario, when we do retaining walls, which we have several on site, the taller the retaining wall is, the more expensive it gets. With poor soils, it gets even more expensive. And so we're finding, trying to find ways to reduce the height of the retaining walls as much as possible. Even if it came down five feet, it would be a significant savings just from the point of view of the type of construction that we have to do. So that's an ongoing thing. We have looked at simple things like instead of using concrete sidewalks for everything, maybe some of them could be asphalt, especially on the things like paths. maybe some of them could be asphalt, especially on the things like paths or trails. We looked at areas where we can switch from concrete curbs to asphalt curbs, where it is feasible to do, along your main driveway is a simple example, there really is, we don't have to do those as concrete, they can be wedge curbs, and that's pretty typical in school design. And then we are looking at the outdoor learning spaces, we need them and we want them, but we want to, we had quite a bit of paving and things like that, patio areas, and so we're looking at alternatives where we can reduce the amount of paving, maybe use stone, things like that. So I don't mean to overburden you with all the detail, but I think it's important that you know that the team, together with the administration, is working really hard to do the balance as we go through the process. I think it's kind of fun, when you have time, it's kind of fun. Cassie's not here, so I could say that.
Dan, when you're performing your value engineering analysis and removing something like the chilled water system, I'm assuming you're looking at the offset that you'd be losing in, say, energy efficiency or something like that, and how those costs would weigh into the process?
Yes, and maintenance, too. If there's an effect on maintenance can be sometimes very significant, and, you know, well, I won't use examples, but they are involved, Ryan is involved, and the administration's involved, and looking at the pros and cons and the engineers explain those things. So next steps for us, we're continuing, obviously, to go through the approval process. We're going to complete the design development, we'll be back with the teachers as we finish up the portions of the building with the layouts. Interior designers are going crazy trying to get that stuff done right now. Maserro has begun their DD estimate, and then, as we go, once we get that result, we'll look back again at other value engineering items and keep reporting to you on process. I think this is my last slide, yes. Any questions?
That was great, Dan, thanks for the update. And I think just for everybody else, I don't know how many of you in the room or online have been following along every month, but we have been doing our best to try to make this a real transparent process. What that means is, if you back up about six months ago, everything was conceptual, conceptual timing, conceptual drawings, conceptual costs. And as designs gets more firm, we understand more regarding budgets, regarding timing. And so that was the update today, where, yeah, it's an extension in time, but it's because we had very aggressive timing before, it's very conceptual. I think that'll actually help us, it'll work to our advantage, we're already seeing costs, the volatility of construction costs being reduced, which is good, that's step one. Hopefully, by, you know, by the time we get to quoting later in Q4, we actually see some cost decrease, but at least the volatility seems to be going out, and that's helpful for us. So, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, any public comments on agenda items? No? Okay. Mr. Scalzo, can you take the curriculum committee? And again, like always, we'll have some discussion, the end result here is to agree what goes on to the consent agenda for next Tuesday.
Under curriculum committee, we have three items. Number one's professional development. Board of school directors approves administration's recommendation to permit Eileen Wallace to attend the Pennsylvania Association of School Nurses and Practitioners moving forward, moving forward conference at the Hershey Lodge in Hershey, PA on April 1st, 2023 to April 2nd, 2023, at a cost of $750.18. Number two, the board of school directors approves the administration's recommendation to approve the Bethel Park State Assessment Participation Improvement Plan as prepared by the district and school administration for the lack of 95% student participation on the PSSA and Keystone exams as required by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Number three, the board of school directors approves the administration's recommendation to permit qualifying high school students and their chaperones, determined based on the number of qualifying students, to participate in the following competition, PMEA Western Region Orchestra 2023 at State College High School, State College, PA, March 8th through March 10th, 2023. Stephanie Glover as chaperone, along with five qualifying students, to attend the PMEA Western Region Orchestra in State College, PA. I do have a question about number two, if somebody could maybe explain the Bethel Park State Assessment Participation Improvement Plan.
I'm going to start, Mr. Scalzo, by reminding the board that participation in the state assessment systems, both the Keystone and the PSSA, is governed by Pennsylvania code, and we're obligated to achieve 95% of our students participating in the assessment. Last year was our first year where the state now indicates those that don't meet that threshold have to produce an improvement plan. And as you'll see in the plan itself, we listed the actual participation percentages, some places, places we were pretty darned close to 95%, but nevertheless, we're still obligated to produce the plan. So I thank our curriculum team, Mrs. Figlioli met with a variety of folks to get some input on how we could see some improvement in the plan. Do you want to jump in here, Mandy, and give us some background on that?
Absolutely. We looked at it from a couple different avenues of how we can improve. One of the large things we think we need to improve is communication with families about what the assessments are, what students can expect on the assessment, how we use that data. So we intend to offer some parent trainings in the spring on both the PSSA exams and what those are all about, and also the Keystone exams. Another important part of the Keystone exams is that students under Act 158 have to have a graduation pathway intact, and the Keystone exams are, passing them is a very easy way to meet that pathway. So we want to make sure that parents understand what role specifically the Keystone exams play in that. And we really just want parents, I think there's some, some students with testing anxiety, some families with testing anxiety, you know, when COVID happened, the test was canceled. Last year, they offered us, year before last, a lot of grace as far as not meeting this threshold, but, you know, now we are, we have to have an improvement plan. The state is also in corrective action for some of the issues across the state, specifically in special education. And so we really want to do some things regarding communication to make sure parents understand what the test is all about and how we use those results, and we want to try to do some things with the students in the schools to kind of bring down some of the test anxiety that students may have, do some things like pep rallies or post-test celebrations, but we really just want to make an effort to make sure that parents who are in a situation where they're considering, you're not technically allowed to opt your child out, you have to do what's called a religious opt-out, where the parent comes in, reviews the exam. So we just want to make sure that when these type of situations happen, that we've really gotten to the root cause with families about what has led to considering that decision. So, great conversations with department facilitators, with the administrative team, and really looking forward to putting this plan into action this spring.
Thank you. Questions?
Dr. Bosch, I do have one. It looks like on here, there are some, it says below the 95% threshold, and Mrs. Figlioli has done a great job of telling us which ones were above 95%. The state does not round, I guess is my question.
Does not.
Okay.
Some subgroups that are low, one student can put you...
That's what I'm looking at, a lot of these...
We have situations where it's one student.
Or it's one student.
And the school has to submit, the LEA, which is the local education agency, has to submit a plan, even if only one school would have had below the 95% participation rate. So we did, this plan is in submission for the entire district, but if you notice that a building or a specific subject test is not listed, it was not below the 95% threshold, but there are a few examples on there where it was one test taker.
Yeah, I mean, we're missing this by .2%.
And the students have to answer a certain amount of questions for their exam to count as fully participating. So we've run into situations where we thought everybody participated, but if a student would not answer a certain amount of the test, then they could count as a non-participant. So it really goes back to making sure that we're communicating with families, also communicating with the students. You know, we don't want to teach to the test, but we want the students to be prepared for what they're going to see. You have to fill in the bubble, you have to write in the box, you know, so there's just some communication things on our end that we want to make sure that we're not overlooking.
So by a student just turning in a test, that does not count as participation?
It does not.
Just for the public to understand?
Yeah, no, it does not.
So if your child puts their name on the test and turns it in, that is not counted as a, if there's no, but nothing's answered, correct?
Yeah, it won't count as a participant.
Are there any other questions on items one through three? I recommend we move items one through three to the consent agenda.
Mr. McGregor, personnel.
Okay, under personnel, we have eight items tonight. Number one, acceptance of resignations. Number two, appointment of personnel. Number three, approval of unpaid leave of absence. Number four, approval of administration tuition reimbursement. Number five, approval of job descriptions. Number six, approval of salary adjustment for non-ACT 93 group. Number seven, social emotional learning hero program. And number eight, the approval of extra duty responsibility programs for 2022, 2023.
I did have a question on number seven. Reading that, it sounds like it only adds up to a total of nine hours spread amongst seven educators, is that correct? It just seems like a rather small amount of...
So that's each educator will be able to earn up to nine hours, six for the presentation, and 30 minutes for some buses and transportation and that kind of thing.
Sounds good, thanks.
Yeah, number six, salary adjustments. Mindsets, since we had closed the position, these act, or non-ACT 93 group, is that just in the building here, or is it district-wide, or?
So, item number five indicates the redeployment of the work for the position that the board closed, and then item number six is adjusting the salaries for those that got those new responsibilities.
And so all that is outlined by the current ACT 93 agreement, there's nothing else that has to be approved as a part of that agreement, right?
Right, non-ACT 93, these are non-administrative, these are clerical.
All right, any other questions? Okay, can I move one to eight?
So all eight of them on the consent agenda? Great.
I'm going to ask this, like, six and five till we, you know, till we get to see it a little bit more. Five and six to be pulled out till we get to see them.
That's fine. So for the meeting next week, can, can we have a summary of what the changes are by position or whatever level of detail we can provide? Okay, facilities, Mr. Motrek.
Yes, sir. We have two items here tonight for facilities. One, approval proposal for the valuation services, and the second one is HVAC replacement project at the Pathfinder School. So can we go on the, talk on the first one?
Yes, so the board had held off until the last possible minute to bring in a, an appraiser to have these buildings, these six facilities appraised, in order to determine their market value, which would then help us in our subcommittee that's working on what to do with these facilities going down the road. So you're approving the hiring of a, of an appraiser.
All right. And number two, as we spoke, since some of the district's representative in Pathfinder, Pathfinder is an old building, a lot of our elementary schools, it's off of Fort Cott Road and Denatti Road, a lot of special ed programs are run through there, and building's over 60 years old, and it needs a lot of work, and one of the items right now, it's on the agenda, is HVAC replacements project, and there's five core schools that are the consortium, and the portion that we're going to propose here for us is, out of $115,000 project, that we come up with $25,300 is our part of the project to start working on replacing the HVAC. With that in mind, if there's no other questions, and I recommend we move these two items forward for the consent agenda.
Mr. Krisbeck, finance items?
Sure thing, we've got 11 items tonight on the finance committee agenda. Number one, February 2023 salaries and bills. Two, January 2023 financial report. Three, budgetary transfers. Four, acceptance of donation. Five, payment for bus garage renovation project for $642,986.25 to A. Foligno Construction. Number six, Bethel Park High School Boys Lacrosse Booster Association Resolution. Number seven, adoption of Allegheny Intermediate Unit Resolution. Number eight, payment for the new elementary school project of $259,740 to Draw Collective. Number nine, payment for K-5 Elementary School Project, that contains one invoice for $32,924.68 and another for $6,320.70, both to HRG Inc. Number 10, payment for Independence Middle School Phase II renovations, a total of $39,372.25 for Hays Design Group. And then number 11 is information only, it's the monthly update that we've been doing for our financial report to our Fund 31 and Fund 32 financials. Does anyone have any questions on any of those items?
No, I just have a comment on number four, the acceptance of a donation, is that going to a specific school, specific, it says dispersment out, I'm just...
Correct me, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe, if I remember our policy correctly, 808 has just an even dispersion across the board for all...
Right, it's even dispersion, but it was even dispersion among free and reduced lunch delinquent cafeteria. So that's, my question was, everybody's getting each school building, or?
Yes, yeah, it's sort of spread out across all the schools that have a lunch debt.
Okay. I didn't know if we were not, like, it was limited or something like that to the first, you know, $100 worth or whatever?
No.
Item number six, with the lacrosse booster, small games of chance, do we, do we have other booster organizations doing that? And then I guess, you know, maybe a little bit of explanation, you know, why does the board need to approve anything here since it's the booster organization? And I guess, third, without having too many questions here, since this is a, is a resolution, does this mean that we're missing a policy? And this should maybe be addressed by a policy rather than a resolution if every time, you know, somebody wants to do one of these?
Well, I will start and tell you that the, the Boys Lacrosse had approached the county, or the, I think it was the county, to get the approval for a small games of chance, do like a 50-50 at the booster games, and they were told that they need to be formally recognized by the school district as the fundraising arm of this organization. So the resolution you would adopt in this motion is to formally recognize this group, this Boys Lacrosse Booster, as the fundraising arm for that Boys Lacrosse team, so they could then apply for the game of chance.
I see, okay.
So this was driven by an external request or requirement from the county treasurer's office, I believe?
Okay.
And a lesser intervention in the form of just a letter, kind of communicating their recognition, was unsuccessful for the organization. So this is to assist the organization?
Okay.
Rather than serve some other legal need that you have internally?
Okay, so if we had another policy, it really wouldn't help, they need some form of document saying that we recognize them as...
The deciding individual or body indicated that only a resolution would be sufficient... The deciding individual or body indicated that only a resolution would be sufficient for this request.
Okay, okay.
Other boosters organizations have had to do this in the past. I know football's done it and basketball. And it has to be done because they are the organization, you can't have the community organization out there using it also.
Okay.
So it's not rec, it is the high school.
And I think lacrosse is probably the newest of our booster organizations. Does this have to be just done once then?
I believe so, yeah. I think once they have that on file, then their renewals, if they apply for renewal should be an easier process.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any other questions? All right, hearing none, I move items one through ten, do the consent agenda.
Ms. Turner, policy committee items.
Right, we only have one to move to the consent agenda, it's, agenda, it's the non-school organization groups and individuals for its third and final reading next week. And I'm sorry, we also have the purchasing subject to bid and quotes and purchases budget, which is the numbers that were installed by the state that need to be moved to the consent agenda for next week. And then finally, we have edits to changes.
So there's six policies there, Mrs. Turner.
Correct.
The first one is standalone, that the PSBA has updated their principles of governance and leadership. The board adopted this resolution, a resolution last year, in fact, the signed copy is there behind Mr. Quinn over in the corner, that, that's been updated for 2023, 24. The other five policies listed there are all associated to changes at the state level regarding homelessness and students who are experiencing instability with regard to their residence. And so everything related to that had to change in our policy to accommodate those changes at the state.
Correct, and all of them are redlined. And they are minor changes, nothing major in any of those. Does anyone have any questions? Then I move numbers one and two to the consent agenda.
Okay, so we can do two?
We can do two also. Megan shaking her head yes earlier.
Because this is a reading now, okay. Okay, good. On the other, there's two items, one is a student agreement, which I think should go on the consent agenda. And then there's a revised health and safety plan. Dr. Gensanti, could you just, I don't see any red lines on here, can you just summarize what the changes were?
The state would like the district to update the health and safety plan every six months. We're a little bit behind, but we're updating it. Nothing significant, we're keeping the mitigation strategies that are in place that are working, like regular cleaning, having clean hands stations available for students, drinking fountains, all those things are in place. Items that we aren't currently doing that were in the, in the health and safety plan prior to would be example, like reporting every COVID case to the, to the Allegheny County Health Department, posting on our website, we no longer do those items. So those changes have been made. Practices of any student that has issues with COVID, from a health standpoint, we would put in a chapter fifteen service agreement. So all those things are in place, we just made some adjustments basically on what we're doing as opposed to what we were doing.
Anybody object with moving both those items to the consent agenda? Okay, those are the end of our committee items. Are there any public comments on anything else related to school business?
Public comments?
Public comments, yeah.
We're, yeah, already.
Of course, you were late, so you gotta wait twenty minutes.
I have little ones and it's a scout night, scout scouts, boy scouts, okay. All right, give me a second here, get myself together. I apologize for being late, sorry, Tuesday nights aren't easy. Okay. Can everybody hear me, hello? Okay. My name is Holly Lissak, I live at eight eight zero Herschar Drive. I am a child of God. You are a children of God, all of you. The student body are created, we are all one nation under God and perfect in His image. There are political activism signs placed in our schools everywhere in Neil Armstrong Middle School. I have spoken to teachers and parents that are not happy with placing students in boxes and labels and the sexualization of little kids kindergarten through eighth grade. This is the sign I'm talking about, so you all know, they shouldn't be placed in school property, okay? Okay, you guys see this? Here are the pictures on display, I have plenty of them to show you. Advertising this, we don't want signs in this school displaying each child's imperfection. This goes without saying, we are all created, knitted in our mother's womb, unique in God's image. These signs are inside George Washington, Neil Armstrong, Independence Middle School. Political activism is inside Neil Armstrong's yearbook also, which is uncalled for, their fifth and sixth grade, come on. Nobody wants politics in their school yearbooks or in their schools. I guess I don't understand why they need to place four signs in someone's face at the school entrance unless you have an agenda to fulfill. Religion and politics are not normally placed in school property. In order for everyone to be included and to belong without being offended, this diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging committee either should be dismantled or bipartisan, and I'll be glad to join that. Parents should be aware with what is inside our schools, okay? I think it is wrong to just assume that Bethel Park would be stronger together by adding these signs on school property without parent agreement. The Bethel Park School District Policy 913, that's 913, clearly states that political signs are not allowed on school property. I would like to add that God is love, if only we could add prayer back in the schools. Prayer would force evil out. I stand before you a voice for Christians. I would like to create an after-school club, if I can, all kids to come to Christ. Is this allowed?
You need to wrap up, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, I stand for him. Okay? This isn't allowed.
Any other comments?
Jim Main, thirty-four eighty-five South Park Road. I think the placement of these signs is problematic because it's my understanding they were actually made by somebody outside of the district. And the policy 913 specifically says that you aren't allowed to do that without approval. Additionally, if the board does decide to start letting people put things in from the outside, I believe there's a First Amendment issue, that you can't allow one group to put them in and not another. So I think it would behoove the board to take these signs that came from an outside source and just tell them they can't put them up. They aren't part of a curriculum, they aren't part of an extracurricular activity, as best I can tell. Thank you.
Thomas Archer, ten twelve Olive Glen Drive. I came here expecting to hear comments about traffic related to the new building or complaints about old schools being turned down. I didn't really come here expecting to hear complaints about a sign. Just so everyone knows, these signs did not come from outside of Bethel Park. They've been sitting in my garage, there aren't any more left, but we may be ordering some more. It was just something that was thought up in an afternoon by people living in Bethel No more effort was put into it, into distributing them, than a couple of Facebook posts. People approached us on their own, asking for them. It's all been paid for by your neighbors, people who live here. So in the past four months, about four hundred of them have been requested. We, there's no organization or hierarchy or mission statement, so honestly, we don't know probably three hundred and ninety of the people who have them. So to say that this, there are some political activists, or there's an outside influence on Bethel Park, that's just not true. And actually, we distributed a lot of these around election time and we did drop a decent number of them off at houses that had Republican candidate signs in front of them.
Thanks.
Lisa Slawinski, sixteen twelve McCully Road. I came to speak about the sign as well in the school property, on the property inside and outside the schools. I came to say that I really, I've seen this sign pop up all around the neighborhoods and that's fine, if you want to place this sign in your yard, that's no problem, that's your property, that's your, that's what you want to stand for, that's what you want to put there. But honestly, my daughter was home from college two weeks ago, she graduated from Bethel Park here a few years ago, and the first thing she said to me is, wow, that's pretty bad. Okay, so when your college kid actually tells you this sign's pretty bad, she's like, well, you know, these kids don't want to be called out. These kids don't want to be called out for being different. Why are we calling them out for being different? We're trying to be inclusive, but you know what? We're all called out every day. Democrat, Republican, white, black, Mexican. You know what, we're all part of the same team, we're all the human race. We gotta stop this. You know what, if we want to make a change, it takes that change to be with all of you. You're all educators, that change needs to start with you and it's not a sign, it's literally love, love, this is what it takes, love in action, agape, this is what we're called to be. You know what, put that love out there to the kids, we don't need a sign for that. What you need to do is be inclusive to every single one of those children that are in school, because there's more that are hurting that aren't in these little categories that we've got, because we've thrown them in hearts, we make that okay? It's not okay. It's a heart, yes, but we're still boxing these kids up. Do you think this kid in a wheelchair feels good about being in a wheelchair because there's a little wheelchair on there? No, now you're just calling them out. We don't need to do that, we need to make everybody inclusive.
Brendan McCarthy, one oh one Jordan Street. I'm here to discuss what I see as a disturbing trend and how the district has handled recent controversial issues surrounding the display of rainbows on school property and in district social media posts. Seems to me that we are currently providing equal weight to a small minority's supposed religious objections and the importance of allowing a certain population of our students to feel recognized and accepted. Actually, the way things have gone, it's more like we're giving more weight to the people that hate. I feel it is important to point out that there's a huge difference between a created perception of persecution and the actual persecution being created by the current dynamic. To my knowledge, there is no Bible verse that denounces rainbows. So the idea that the presence of a rainbow somehow persecutes people who believe in the Christian God, simply a created grievance by people who wish to wield Christianity as a tool of hate. A person's faith does not give them the right to delegitimize the existence of a population. Conversely, we have a marginalized, at-risk population of LGBTQ plus students in our district. Whether people like it or not, they're here. Studies show this population is significantly more likely to develop depression and abuse drugs or alcohol. One study showed that one-third of LGBTQ plus youth had seriously considered suicide, while one in five had actually attempted it. Studies also show that this difference in mental health outcomes between LGBTQ plus youth and their non-LGBTQ plus peers can be almost completely mitigated by feeling supported and accepted in their homes, communities, and schools. As school directors and administrators, you don't have control over the acceptance of this community in people's homes. But you have a duty to help this community feel accepted and safe at school. If we can't have a rainbow on a picture advertising the district's kindergarten registration, what's next?
Okay, time.
Do we ban prisms from science class? Skittles from the vending machine? You guys tell me.
Hi, I'm Andy Kroniken, I'm at fifty-nine seventy-seven Dublin Road. I actually didn't come here planning on speaking today, but once again, I'm hearing a group that are very vocal complaining about political signs and political activism in our schools. If our schools are not the home of political activism, we are doing something wrong. Our children should be pushing us to be better. The signs that are put in these schools, the signs that are out in our public, they don't say vote for any one group, they don't say Christianity is wrong, they don't say be gay. If they did and the children put them up, that wouldn't be a problem, it's what the children want, that should be in our school. Those voices should be heard. These signs represent the community saying to the students and to the people of Bethel Park, that we are a diverse community. And all those voices should be seen and should be recognized. Diversity of race, economics, ability, both physical and mental, as well as sexuality and expression of gender. These are all unique features that are growing and changing in Bethel Park. These signs, as I see them, have been an organic grassroots effort for inclusion and telling people, telling our students specifically, they do have a voice and we should foster that. Because are not our students going to be our future leaders? Do we want them to not have compassion for others who are different? No, we do. We want them to be able to look at someone who's different and say, I hear you, I may not agree with you, but I do hear you. And the only way to do that is things like this effort right now, telling our students it is safe. So thank you.
Hi, Christina Headley, five eight eight one Irish Town Road. I just want to say, so I have two children, one's in high school, one's in middle school. My kids don't come home and tell me that they have a different friend that's a different ethnicity, that has a disability, they tell me, they played with Chrissy in the, in the playground. When my daughter was in elementary school, she had a friend in a wheelchair. I never knew she was in a wheelchair because my kid did not see that. My kid learns to love anybody and everybody and that is what is most important. It doesn't come from a sign, it comes from home, being raised to love everyone, no matter what. You don't have to put up a sign for your kid to know who to love, period.
Hi, everyone, my name's Liz Avon, I live on one oh nine Sandstone Court. I just kind of wanted to echo the voices of what I think is actually the silent majority. There is nothing wrong with a rainbow. I have a three-year-old, she loves rainbows, every time she sees one, she says, oh mommy, look, a rainbow. I don't, I think that there was a need for the announcement of how to register for kindergarten. I saw that there was a cute little girl lying on the ground with a rainbow chalk drawing. I couldn't go back and find it because some minorities voiced their objections to it and it was immediately taken down out of fear. So I just wanted to echo to make sure that it is known that there is a lot of people in the community who has no fear of rainbows, rainbows do not exclude people, it is all of the colors in the rainbow, we're all here as one group.
Any other comments? Public comments? Board comments?
I know they lost on Friday night, but congratulations to the boys' basketball team for making the playoffs. Great run with a first-year coach here in Bethel Park. So congratulations to all the boys that put out their effort on Friday night.
And good luck to all of those that start spring sports in two weeks. Thank you.
Any other board comments?
In addition to all those reminders, the High School Musical will be getting underway in a couple of weeks, so be sure to check that out, and as a parent of Stage Crew member, woo, go Stage Crew!
Is March fifteenth through eighteenth, I think they go on sale tonight at midnight. The musical is Addams Family.
Yeah, tickets tonight are pre-sale for cast?
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, I'd also like to express my personal support for all of our teachers and administrators that, you know, have shown unequivocal support for all of our students, no matter who they are.
Any other comments? Motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? Meeting adjourned.